Public hearing for Olivia and Michelle Rogers requesting area variance at sixty-five twenty-four Sweetland Road, Stafford, New York. Notice in the paper, notice is hereby given to the zoning board of appeal with town staff will hold on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one. At the Stafford Town Hall. Will conduct the public hearing and sudden camera regarding application for Olivia and Michael Rogers for zoning area variance. For area variance to build a pole barn at sixty-five twenty-four Sweetland Road. Okay.
Yeah, I'll post what's the difference there down on property line there is.
Uh, they're requesting. Get this right. You're requesting fifteen feet on the rear, correct?
Correct.
And five feet on the side.
Oh, just an additional five feet on the side.
Yeah.
Five feet off the lot line there. Where the, where the, where the current lot line is.
Yeah.
Okay, five feet off of the side is where they want to build the, um, new building.
On, on our property.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Into the rear fifteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, inside the tree line.
No, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that Mike at all.
Now, is, is the property line inside the tree line? I know there's a tree line in the back and then there's area on the side where it looks like somebody mows and.
Yeah, I, I just, I just mow it.
He mows it for me more or less, yes. Yeah, I'm telling him I wood mow, but he says he mows it himself. I don't have a problem with him, you know, uh, you know, having a five foot plant between.
Yeah.
It's just, it's more or less just the right way to get into the field behind the house if we need it, so.
Okay.
Whose right of way is it?
Yours?
Yeah, Nick Scott. No, and as far as the back, you know, fifteen feet. I don't have a problem with the guy building the.
All right.
The pole barn there, it's, you know, it's far down my end anyways, it's on the other guys.
Right.
Okay, the, uh, the variance.
Okay, all the stuff that we, we got here from the county.
How far does that need to be from the right of way?
Well, it's the property line.
It's the property, right.
Well, it's the property line.
These are the end of the.
Can you explain what all this stuff is?
Um, so on the front page, see the two, uh, green squares?
Yeah.
Those are the end of the leach lines. And that, the one that's more towards the middle of the page would be closest to the building and it's, it's probably still more than twenty feet away from the closest edge.
Okay. Now, where the, where the, um, where the yellow and the red are, I'm assuming that's where the, um, the actual tank is?
Yeah, and then I think one of them just designates the junction box.
Okay.
Where the leach lines.
Yeah, the yellow one is the junction box and the red is the, um.
Yep.
Okay, from, from those two points right there, how far away is the building going to be?
It's over twenty feet.
Okay.
Am I the only one that didn't get a copy of the application?
That was from last week, last month?
Did we actually, we didn't actually have copies ourselves though?
Yeah, we did. Didn't we?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Uh, okay, I thought everybody got a copy of that some.
Cause I, where's, I just don't know where the building is. I see the leach lines and stuff.
From the back of the house is it to the back corner, back corner?
Yeah, if you look there.
The dark shadow.
Right, it would be right here, yeah.
Here, Chris. No, there isn't here. Leslie, the arm on the. Where it sits, it sits.
Arms can be thirty-two by twenty-four.
Thirty-two by twenty-four.
Along the backside.
Where they said the right of way is beyond their woods.
What the proposed structure is gonna be, how far from the edge of the leach system would you say it's gonna be?
Probably like twenty feet.
Typically, Mike, do you look at to see is there a buffer zone around the leach bed system before you get into a approach?
We have, yeah, we, we said, this was the, the map that you got, everything's there, came from the county. The biggest thing that when, when we first looked at it, we talked about getting it off the, um, the side lot line. Or just looking at more than five feet, but the problem with that is if you go more than five feet, now you're working on top of the, your subject name.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with this. Did it, did it even have to go to the county?
It did not go to the county, no. No, I'm in the county, the, the health department, that's where the maps came from. The only problem that, the one issue you are gonna run into, not now, but you could run into is the fact that square footage, you're just about maxed out on your, the size of your, your lot.
Oh, well, you're only supposed to cover a certain percentage of property of buildings.
Right.
You think he is? What's the percentage?
It's getting pretty close. But, that's your, your, uh, to the right hand. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I don't know.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, um, does everybody have their copies of the, the minutes? On your cell phones?
Yeah.
Okay. Walt did not bring the, um, minutes, if you want to check them on your cell phones, okay. What's that? Do you look at them good?
Yes, I read them whole.
Okay. Any other?
I made a motion to.
In a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kristen? Leslie?
Leslie.
Thank you. That's Leslie, right?
I ran into her.
Just checking.
Cause I know her name, like, don't, don't say it.
Uh, okay, first done, old person's application of Olivia and Michael Rogers for an air, for an area variance to build a pole barn at sixty-five twenty-four Sweetland Road. Does anybody wanna make a motion on this?
Do you want us to do this?
Yeah.
To the area?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
No. No. Area variance findings and decision. Number one, whether a desirable change can be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties.
No.
No.
Uh, does anybody have a reason they want this done? That would affect anyone else at this time.
Yeah. No immediate neighbors. No other dwellings.
Whether benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
No, Matt, not the way that we're the subject.
No, because we don't allow structures.
In the front.
And the leach line considers the rest of the.
Correct.
Just kinda have a second story there.
The other, while we're, what we're talking, the other mark on the front, that's where your well is?
Yeah, I think, we, we didn't know anything about that, but that's what the guy, this is what he sent us.
It's like a buried well.
It's a capped well or something?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's not in use.
It's not used?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it's.
You didn't want their own groundwater?
Yeah, we, we, we made their own groundwater, yeah.
Yes, cause all the paperwork that the county sent, most of it came from two thousand and two.
Yeah, he said there's a previous, nothing's been changed there, so he said previous one would be all right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, that, that was one of the questions I had, I assumed it was a well, I didn't know why else they would have marked the map, but.
Yeah.
Sorry, Kristen.
What?
I jumped in.
Oh, that took me, gave me time to write in the reasons. Whether the requested variance is substantial? It is.
Yes.
Say that it's mitigated by the fact that the subject system would be.
Okay.
Right. See, and that's the, that's the unfortunate part, we have that one time here in Stafford, uh, building lots, we did build on a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage. And we have them coming through here all the time, if you try to do anything on their property, I mean, it's, you're, you don't, you don't meet the criteria.
Well, this is why it's a varied lots, but we don't allow lots that small.
Yeah.
Uh, with, number four, will the variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
And finally, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? I would say no, zoning law created, I don't know.
Well, it's a combination, yes, it's a combination of old, old zoning laws that allowed a lot that size.
So you only say yes, but.
With an explanation.
Okay. Uh, and now we need a motion or?
Yes, can I, anybody wanna make a motion on the, um?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Aye, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, yep. Okay, that's it.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys for coming.
Appreciate it, yep, thank you.
Thank you, bye guys.
Yep, wanna straight for the solar? We'll stick it up.
We've got dogs to feed.
Okay, next, um, it's not on the agenda as previous to having a public hearing for BW Solar, but the representative is here. For any of the board members that have questions on the solar. Representative is here from solar, if anybody has any questions, I have a couple, but anybody else can either jump in.
Did? We didn't tell us that.
Yes, that was last month.
Yeah, but, girl, I just realized that we five months.
That was last week, last month.
It's not, it's not in the minutes. I, that's why I just, I remember.
Only the worry builder is.
I thought, I thought I saw Harrington's out there. Did you get that on there, Walt?
And I thought I remembered doing two of those.
I'm just trying to make sure we get everything done before we go on, but you'll be right there.
For Harrington's last month? Did you get that in the minutes?
Harrington's?
It's not in the minutes.
It what? Harrington's?
Harrington's.
What about it?
I'm two thirds.
Last month.
We proved it?
Yeah.
It's not in the minutes.
Thought it was a done deal.
It is, but it's not in the minutes.
I just wanna make sure it's a done deal.
Okay. Yeah, it is a done deal.
Do I need to make a motion?
All right, no.
They need to be added?
Yes.
What, how is phrase that?
Just basically there will be amended.
There's a lot.
By the next, by the next meeting.
Okay, I make a motion that the November minutes.
Or flat?
Be amended to add Harrington's, Harrington Greenhouse's application and approval. I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Yeah. I saw, I saw, when I looked down through the minutes, I saw. Okay, and now it's the questions for, any questions anybody has for solar?
Does that include us, Mike, or just the board for now?
Just the board for now, this isn't the public hearing, we'll have an opportunity whenever we, whenever the public hearing is for.
Wasn't it advertised to follow this?
No, it was.
It was in the daily?
It wasn't supposed to be, it was supposed to have been polled. She said that the ad was in the, the public hearing, it was in the daily.
Yeah.
No, 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 for the solar.
Well, that was, that was for last month.
No?
No, and that was canceled, they didn't have it.
Yeah, it was supposed to be for tonight, but you did cancel it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I read it in the paper, I wish I had it with me, it's on my dining room table. This pole barn was one and underneath of it was the solar, tonight at seven o'clock.
Yeah, it was canceled.
She just said it was in the paper.
Well, that doesn't mean it didn't get canceled after it was in there.
I think, when did, when did you, when did you read it?
Well, I can't honestly tell you, it's, uh, it's sitting on my dining room table, but I read it in the newspaper.
Yeah, but, but how long ago, last night or Saturdays, Friday?
I don't know.
Okay.
But it certainly, I, I came.
Right, it was supposed to have been canceled.
It was, I called them up and they told me to cancel it, I talked to the lady.
Well, I would think that they would have to reprint it, there's a cancellation.
She deleted it.
I don't know if it's required that they print the cancellation.
I, I don't know.
I've never had, I guess.
No, we've never had one that was canceled that still showed up.
It's probably got canceled after you sent it to the daily.
Well, see, the problem is, the problem is, as North Walt explains to me, it's not like it used to be when you called the daily and they put it in. You actually have to physically go to their website, you put it in yourself.
Right.
They don't even, they have nothing to do with it.
Right.
And then Walt had to finally call somebody to get it pulled.
And they pulled it, told me to ignore the invoice.
So.
But we've never had it canceled and I don't know as it's required that we do another legal requirement.
Well, how would we know if it got canceled if we're watching those legal notices?
Well, it shouldn't have been there, that's, that's unfortunately for some reason.
But it didn't get canceled till after, it didn't happen the next day.
No, but we, but I talked, we had plenty of time to get it canceled before it, um, would have, would have come in the paper.
It's a, it's an anomaly, it's the first time it's happened. And we just don't have a procedure for it and we're keen on.
Okay, well, anyways, we don't have a public hearing for him tonight, but he is here to answer questions for the board. Uh, it is not a public hearing, when that's rescheduled, then that'll be your opportunity. If you've got questions or issues or whatever, we can talk about it then.
And there's no opportunity to make a comment tonight?
It's, I mean, it's, it's, you can if you want, but I really don't see any sense of it because we're really not deciding anything or even talking about it tonight, so.
Well, last month when I was here, you yourself said to these young people, um, I don't know if you were talking about their leach line or their property line or their tree line, but you said something about, um, about twenty-five years ago, a mistake was made and we have to rectify it, but we, but we have to rectify it. And so I would like to say to you folks tonight, we are facing something really big and twenty-five years from now, we don't want to say we should have rectified it, we should have thought it through, we should have investigated deeper, and now we have solar in Stafford. So I would like you to consider that. Mistakes may, are made and we don't wanna look back at it twenty-five years later and say, oh, that was true there. Thank you.
Well, I think that's why everybody's doing their due diligence on this, I don't think anybody is, is not, because they know I'm that, so. I'm not sure the rest of the board isn't, so. You know, I totally agree with you, you know, we can't compound mistakes that were made twenty-five years ago and, and continue them, so, I agree. Does anybody here in the board have a question?
I just have more, I guess, a procedural across, so if the variances were granted, uh, I went through the, the solar law, did you give me the air note for today? Right now, the solar farms are only allowed in industrial area.
Yeah, industrial or industrial park.
Okay, so if the variances were to improve, would this get kicked back to town board to amend the town code, is that, I assume that doesn't egg district? Where the proposed.
No, it's in, it's, it's an industrial park.
Oh, it's an industrial, okay.
Yes.
Okay, alright, that's right.
And I'm not sure how long ago it was made in industrial park, I know it was a while ago.
It was part of their comprehensive plan when it was switched over, there's actually only two, two areas where solar's allowed. And it was only three parcels by us, um, up in that order that could fit solar, the others are down by handsome gravel. Um, and can't sustain solar because of the corporate company's handsome business operations.
So it's moved now?
So that piece of it, there's literally one place that solar can go that's zoned properly in this town, and that is three parcels of land and we're sitting on two out of the third. So this is, for the most part, unless you guys decide to change zoning laws, this is the only area of land in all twenty thousand acres of Stafford, well, Stafford's a little under twenty thousand acres, but literally the only acreage that can sustain solar based on your zoning code.
The one question I have is when, when we talked the other day on the phone, when we talked about the, um, um, the non-residential property line setback, that's where you're putting it back by the railroad, correct?
Yes, so there's, there's actually, um, one, two, three, four. Five, there's five variances total that are asking for.
Yes.
That specifically deal with a two hundred foot non-residential property setback. Um, and I'll let you put this up, just a minute. Um, those, again, are, are not deal breakers for the project, they were meant to kind of encompass what we thought the, the work of the solar group was doing, which was to keep solar away from residential properties. Uh, so by asking for those setbacks, and I'll use this, this one as the example. Uh, it actually pulls it further away from the road and towards the railroad tracks and towards another parcel of land that the woods are currently farming. Um, and we're not asking for those to be zero, we're asking them to be somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred by the railroad tracks, we're asking for fifty. Um, because it has a nice berm, it has a bunch of trees, comes back on the other side, there's more farmland on the other side of that as well. Um, and I think it's fairly common sense that if we push it as close to the railroad tracks, people would most likely be happy with that. Um, those five variances and then one is, is in between the two parcels of land that the woods own, we're just saying if you put two hundred feet from each property line, you now have a four hundred foot corridor of empty space. And the woods could farm that, but again, it's gonna push solar in all different directions, if we can consolidate it and pull it away from the main road and towards the center of that property, I, I think it's achieving the intent of the law. So that was the hope around it, is that we were actually operating in good faith as to what the town was looking for, which is to avoid the, the issue of, of out there with the Brable solar project, where they, they did, but they're twenty feet off the road.
Well, that's, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, when, you're basically asking to, to, to move it a hundred feet closer to the, to the railroad property.
Correct.
Okay. How far off, if you, if you do away with that, okay, and stay two hundred feet off, how close does that put it to the road?
It would move it another hundred.
Well, I understand, I, I, I understand, but I understand it's a hundred feet closer.
Sure.
But how far is that from the road? I, there's no maps that I can, that I can find.
So currently, um, and I don't think we have like the exact distance from the road shown.
Yeah, in any of your maps you had, there wasn't.
Yep, so, so this whole area is basically fenced in, when we, when we first approached the woods, we asked, where can we put this? Does anyone might like to take a shot on the farm that's away? Um, they actually told us, we would like to continue our farming operation, they have cattle up here, they have a farm here, and they actually have corn in all of this and this backfield.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Woods farms that?
Yes.
But they don't own that?
Yes, they own it.
Okay, there, there was a property in respect to, they were farming that they don't own.
Correct.
Have you talked to the owner or is that moved, you don't need to?
Well, we're hoping to do it just on this because that's the woods, it gets a little bit more complicated when we have a, a second tenant that they're trying to.
Well, tenancy versus landowner. Okay, so you're not.
So the woods own all of this, there is another gentleman who owns this.
Right.
But the woods farm that as well.
But they don't own it.
They don't own it, correct.
Woods don't own it.
Right.
We're not building any solar on this.
So that means your variance to be closer to them.
To this property line, correct.
And what, how close do you want it?
Um, I believe on, on five, we were asking it to be reduced from two hundred to either seventy-five or a hundred.
Okay, hundred is there?
A hundred, yep, so again, a hundred foot comes down five, just like this, and along the back here, when we get to the railroad track, we're asking for fifty. Um, and I believe down here, let me show you in this next one, it actually pulls it out. Down here, I believe we're back at a hundred.
And that's across from the college where you look.
Yep, college is, college is right over here.
Right.
The woods farm, um, or the woods barn is right here and their house is actually right over here.
Did you go over there and look, look at it?
Yeah, but I did my, yeah, so I was trying to figure out.
If you see, if you look at the, um, the farm, I believe it's an old corn crib or something that's there, it's, it's basically what I was showing the other day, it's basically behind that, where you're.
Yep, so for reference, this border right here is the two hundred foot setback. So if you're using that as a reference, you can roughly say we are well over six hundred feet from the road for this, this particular area.
Okay, so, so then you're, you're gonna be a hundred feet closer, so now you're talking five hundred feet off the road.
And part of the reason we wanted to be back there was A, so they could maintain their, their cattle operation, but also there's a slight slope of the hill where if we can keep it down on that slope, this actually faces south. Um, and this part kind of creeps up this way, but if you're back this way, the topography of the land actually helps to hide it. You won't see it as well. Cause we stood, we stood right here, we're actually working on a, a visual, digital rendering. Um, so we did a point here, we did a point up here by Mr. Hawkins' house, and we were doing a point over here as well to show what the visual would look like standing from that road, and when we first took the pictures, he has corn growing here, you could just barely see the tops of the corn.
How about coming down the college road though, by the college, you'd see it from there?
Yeah, we can't screen it from every direction, three hundred and sixty degrees, especially if you're, you know, up on a hill coming down, it's just not possible. Um, but I have talked to, to Mr. Hawkins as well, um, we did that point specifically in front of his. Um, we did that point specifically in front of his house, because he's lived there for thirty years. Um, and, and I understand going from an agricultural field and having that view for thirty years to solar, I get. Um, so we're going to work with him to do what we can to find some screening mechanisms. Um, the part of the hope by getting these variances, of asking for these variances, is we are again pulling it further away from the road, away from the bend, and then they have more space, the woods, to actually farm and continue to have corn grow up and in front of that. Additional screening will be put in right by the fences, um, some trees to, to help screen it as well, but if we can have an active farm in front of it, that's again, another visual barrier that'll keep it several hundred feet away from the road and, and additional visual screening that should drive them by.
And to answer your question, if coming down the hill, the TAVI is already approved, the solar farm is going to be on the right-hand side, coming from the college, coming down that hill. So that's going to be all solar there?
Yeah, ju- actually, just behind the woods house is going to be about a one-megawatt, um, solar field. Couple, I would say less than a hundred feet from their house and, uh, I would say twenty-five feet from the property line.
So how many properties, all zoned industrial, there's a mixture of ag and?
You've got ag, agricultural, residential, I'm not sure across the road, but all the college properties.
Actually, you have the map right there?
See, most of, if you drive down, there's a couple of houses that are closed, they're all owned by, so they're owned by the college. And they have professors who live in them, and who is everybody?
So this is, this is the current map. Um, I have the entire town. Um, which you can see down there, purple's agr- agricultural, you have the college right here. Um, all of this is zoned industrial park. So the only area you can do solar on is this parcel, this parcel, this one, and these are actually residential, too small. So you really have three parcels of land that you could reasonably do solar on, and we're asking to do it on two.
And that's what, a hundred, that's not the hundred ninety-five acres?
The hundred ninety-five acres is the land that we are, are working with, uh, the woods to use. But when we asked them what could we lease to do this project, they specifically outlined portions back here so that they could keep their, their farming operations up in the front. And obviously, efficiency-wise, if you have, you know, a hundred, two-hundred feet of field over here, two-hundred feet of field over here, it just makes it a little bit harder to get the clean part.
Right.
Is there any TAVI development pressure in that area or? This is enough to move the map stuff, is there any development pressure in there?
Those parts of that Stafford?
The college we discussed at one time, we, uh?
The other solar farm's right here in the TAVI, this is the, this is the town.
That's just a farm?
Yep, so it's going to be right here.
So that's, can we just, I just think people need to be aware, can you point out where that other solar farm's going to be?
Other solar farms are going to be right here.
In his backyard?
Yep, in their backyard. And it's, it's owned by the college, so they technically don't really have a say in it. They've already reached out to them. The engineers that are working on this with us are actually the same engineers, Lobella, that are doing that with the college and the IDA. Um, it's already been approved, it's just a matter of when they're going to build it. Um, so to the point of some of the other variances we're asking for, the thousand-foot from residential properties, you're going to have a solar project within a thousand feet of Stafford residence. No matter what, that's, that's happening. So if our project doesn't happen, you're still going to have a project that's in the thousand-foot and well within the two-thousand-five-hundred feet of residence.
And well, and the view of every window on the west side of his home.
And they understand that, and there's actually some screening that's already in place. They've talked to them about what kind of screening, um, they would like. We're doing the same exact thing with folks around here.
Do you know offhand, does he use setback requirements?
Uh, I know it's, it's small. Like fifty to twenty-five feet?
No, from all the property lines?
What property lines and center of the roads?
It's probably twenty-five to fifty feet.
Usually what makes our requirement is fifty feet, I would, there is fifty feet.
It's got, it's, it's?
It's got to be fifty, it's got to be, it's got to be fifty.
I would be shocked if it was twenty-five. I just know I drove by the one that was, that was north of this project. And it is, it is close to the road, and I think that's what is garnering a lot of, of concern. I agree with you. In twenty-five years, I hope this isn't a project that people are looking at and saying,
We're not saying that.
Let's screw up. I hope, I hope we're not saying that.
Okay. Last thing that I have, I had a resident call me today and had me, asked me a question that I did not have an answer for. And, and I said I would ask that question tonight. How does this solar, how does this solar project make Stafford a better place to live or to work?
I think that's a great question. Um, I've been to several meetings, uh, town board meetings, this is my second zoning board meeting. Um, and a lot of the places, simply because of availability of land, is going to be in the more rural communities. Right? Solar is not small. We're talking here about sixty acres. Um, you can't build that in the city limits of Rochester. You can't build that in, in some more towns close to the city. You have to go to areas where there is enough land to support it. What I think this brings to the town is it's a, I, I look at towns and I see the, the acres that you have as, this is your portfolio. Right? You have an opportunity to use this land to help improve your schools, your fire systems, uh, this town court, the town council. Um, it's resources that go back to the community. And if you're looking at what your tax base is and how much acreage is used for agricultural, I can say with relative confidence that over sixty-five percent of your land is most likely being used for agricultural. If you can add small bits and pieces of different businesses that you feel help the community, I believe using three-tenths of one percent of the land for solar is a good use of the land. Um, it brings additional tax revenue to the community, uh, that doesn't have any burden to it. We're not adding additional homes that the school systems have to absorb, which, which has a cost. Right? When we have new students coming into, into the school system, there is a burden associated with that. Um, when you have new roads being built, new utility infrastructures being built, that is a cost to the town. Um, so this is a system and a business that brings additional revenue and tax dollars directly to the town that takes nothing from you in return. Um, we ask for pilot programs because it gives us some kind of stability into the future. New York just passed or just started enacting taxing laws for how to assess this. They could change. So a pilot really gives us stability into the future for up to thirty years to say, this is what our assessment's going to look like, this is what we're going to pay the town, this is our agreement. Here's our partnership for the next thirty years. That gives a foundation for how to proceed forward. Um, the, the town attorney sent us a letter when we said we were looking for a pilot, uh, that included a community host agreement. When we get a pilot, if we get a pilot with the county, it would be six thousand dollars per megawatt, that's what the IDA has already said is their standard. Um, and that's split between the three taxing entities, the town, the school district that it falls in, and the county. Each of you have a set percentage that you already get of your regular taxes. We would pay the six thousand dollars per megawatt, so sixty thousand dollars total. And then we also look to enter in a community host agreement with the town, that again is a, a certain dollar amount per megawatt. That would go one-hundred percent to the town. So for round members' sake, it's a ten thousand, or a ten-megawatt project, a thousand dollars sake. That's ten thousand dollars that would go direct into the town every year for the next thirty years. And you don't have to share with anyone, it's on your month, unallocated money. You could direct it towards the fire department, which I know has been a constant conversation, you could direct it towards the courts, you could direct it towards, um, flags. I know someone was mentioning flags at one of the town board meetings to spruce up the town. Anything you truly want to put it towards. Tearing down some of the, the homes that I know have been, uh, been a battle in the courts or something to that effect. Um, so it's a, it's, it's a sign of neighbor. Um, it is something that's coming to most towns in rural communities, and it's a limited capacity right now. So if it doesn't go here, someone's going to figure out a way to drag the power line a little bit further down, maybe to the TAVI where the rules and regulations are a little bit more favorable, and then that money goes to that town. It's just simply supply and demand situation. Um, and as I mentioned in previous board meetings, there's very limited places we can do it based on the capacity of the power lines. So if you find a town that's willing to work with you on the process, um, you work through that process, you find out what works for them, what we can financially accommodate and properly accommodate, and try our best to, to make both sides happy.
You mentioned, I think that's a, I just clarified from, um, you used the word pilot.
Yes.
How, how's that work? I mean, this is not a pilot project, obviously, is that what?
No.
If a pilot doesn't work, we're done, but it's funny how that term is used in this process.
Sure, pilots are a financial mechanism, they're used all across New York State for different industries. Um, and it stands for payment in lieu of taxes. Again, they just started getting, uh, tax guidelines for how to assess these. Um, and even those are still under question. So a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, is basically a way of saying, okay, there's all these folks lobbying for how this is going to be taxed. If we can't figure out a way for that to work, here is another mechanism that has been tried and true before. And you enter into a pilot agreement with either the IDA, who handles the negotiations for all three entities, or you go to each entity themselves. Typically, most people go directly to the IDA, it's easier to deal with one entity than it is three individual entities. Um, and usually the school district, uh, and the county defer to the IDA because then they don't have to spend money on legal to figure out what's going to work for them. Um, so pilots are entered with the county, we do pay a fee, um, for the IDA's, uh, work that they do. Um, it's usually like one percent of the total cost of build. That goes to the county coffers, that they can help bring new business to the county and make sure that it's regulated. Um, but that also, a, a portion of that would go directly to the school system and fall into a game of town. And the school system?
That only goes to the school system that, uh, arrays in, correct?
Correct.
Because that's not fair to the rest of the school systems in the town.
I, I don't, I don't make the rules, it's just the way New York State dictates it.
Just make a point.
No, I, I agree with you, and, and I do know that there's several school systems right around the area.
It's tied in this town.
Yeah.
So Dan, you're saying that, that money would only go to the town that played in high school?
I remember.
Oh, that's by and virgin?
Yes, by and virgin.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't dictate that, that's, that's through New York State. Um, but, but yes, it is not exactly fair if it falls in one town but goes to a different school system. I've had that happen before, it's, it sticks. To, to just add to that question, the other opportunity, is it something for the town to get exposed to in terms of, of young folks seeing something different? Um, if, some people see it as a negative. Um, if you have deep agricultural roots, I understand that. I was talking to my dad on the way here, he grew up in Masonville, New York, it's one stoplight. Uh, schools, four roofs. So to, to him, you guys are a big city. And, uh, and he, he gets the same feelings, you know, if you're an agricultural community and you bring something in that's outside of the norm and you haven't had it before, there's a, there's a process you got to work through. You got to figure out the case, you want to make sure twenty-five years from now, you're not kicking yourself saying, damn, why did we do that? Um, so my hope is that we can work with you guys to talk through what fits the community. Um, I do know, and I've said it in just about every meeting, um, there's really two provisions that cause us pause. And that's the twenty-five-hundred-foot real property portion of the solar law and the thousand-foot setback from residential. Thousand-foot setback from residential turns our hundred-plus-acre parcel into about six acres of usable land. And the twenty-five-hundred-foot real property portion, uh, is a financial mechanism that we have talked to insurance companies, lawyers, and none of them see the viability of how that policy would ever actually be implemented. Um, there was a, a woman from town who sent me an email saying, if your argument is that this doesn't reduce the home value, why can't you institute it? One of the reasons the insurance company told us was, okay, we can do this, we'll go out and implement it, it'll cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees, and if anyone calls that policy into effect, it's the policy that we wrote for you, and we're going to argue with that landowner, well, you need to prove to us how your property was negatively impacted, and they're just going to deny the claim. So there's so many loopholes in it that no one wants to touch it. And we, we physically cannot get a company or law firm that says this is a viable opportunity. It's just not a mechanism that can be instituted when you're looking at half a mile outside of the property footprint. And we're talking crossing ninety and crossing railroad tracks and crossing into, to the TAVI. Half a mile. So it's, it's just something that can't be achieved, and no one will actually do it for us, even if we wanted to.
But in the law itself, it gives, it's not, um, nothing is absolute. In the law itself, you can come up with separate agreements with the property owners in that area. You guys are the ones in charge of the studies, we're not hoisting any, anything, um, foreign to you on it. You're actually, within the law, allowed to come up with your own study criteria. Um, this may be a little old Stafford, but, you know, we get to the big city sometimes, and there are insurance policies and financing done on things much more complex than this. So, there's a lot to work with in that law. Um, I, I don't see where you'd try it.
So my counterpoint to that would be, where in New York State do you have a basis for this to ever have set precedent? Because I have never seen it personally.
Am I your point?
What's that?
That wasn't your point.
No, and, and I understand, we've talked to our, our legal team and our financiers, I actually have a, one of our lawyers here today from Harris Beach, also represents the county, the IDA. Um, everyone we have talked to has said we don't see how this is implementable. You can go out and we can create some kind of document, and in ten years from now, we're then going to be caught, sitting in court, negotiating how will the legality of all this works. So it's kind of, you're creating a, a big beehive here. And it seems like maybe the intent was, we'll pass the law, but maybe slide something in there that just makes it hard enough that it doesn't happen. Because outside of that, I have personally never seen anything of this nature.
Right.
I've seen thousand-foot setbacks in, in counties before, and the supervisor came out and said, we don't want solar. And they put a thousand-foot setback in the, in the law. And, and I see it all the time, there's towns that, that their intent is, okay, we'll pass the law and we'll slide a little something in there that just makes it hard enough that they don't do it. And to be completely honest, we're the fifth company that the woods have talked to. And we're the only ones that have taken it this far because of those parameters in the law. Everyone said, hey, this looks great, this looks great, but we got to the town level and we don't want to spend the time or energy going through what is being asked.
Right. Again, that was, uh, that provision itself was based on a, um, organization that has nationwide exposure. So it is being used nationwide. That exact provision has been passed in other towns in Genesee County, so if you're going to do more business in Genesee County, you're going to see that provision. The provision primarily, um, was based on what we're seeing from your counterparts right now. As I told you at the town meeting, all you have to do is look at the maps for the town of Byron, where you have non-participants being completely blocked in by solar panels. And you simply have to look at the five quarters to see what those, um, more friendly provisions would take it as, what that looks like when it's implemented next door to somebody's house. So, um, again, I, uh, since I was part of the team that wrote the law, I'm a little favorable to it, but I think you can, uh, you can make it work if you want to work with the people that have to live around us. have to live around us, so.
What was the organization that you referred to that you found?
One second here.
Like sort of divorceless?
And while I was looking it up, I do understand the intent, I get it. And to the point of saying that, you know, something's been used in the past means that it's still works, that everyone here knows that New York State is basically the state of lawyers and insurance. And even if I wanted to implement this, I do have a map, a quick map that I made just on my housing app that shows it's over a hundred individual parcels. That type of lift with not only legal, but financial insurance companies to individually craft a different plan with every single one of those folks, I'm sure everyone here can imagine that that is not an easy task by any stretch of the imagination, and that's not my reasoning for not doing it, is they simply will not do it with us. It's not something we can entertain. And ten years down the road, if for whatever reason we have another housing crisis and someone wants to claim that, you know, housing prices dropped and, well, I can get my money from them because I signed an agreement, we're just opening ourselves up to liability in which a ten million dollar project could turn into twenty million dollars in a blink of an eye. And so we need this thing running, operating at a high efficiency for seven-plus years just to start to see profit. I mean, that's, we're really sinking in a significant amount of money with the intention of making sure it functions at a high rate, and that we are not letting this thing go derelict, because if we're not generating power at all the opportune times, we're not generating the maximum of money that we could potentially get back out of that.
How many projects does BW have up and running now that we could look at?
Up and running and built?
Yeah.
We don't have any built yet, but we did just work on one point six gigawatts a little bit further out west.
Out west where, in New York, you mean, or?
No, we're actually in fourteen different states. I'm personally working on about thirty-eight different projects across New York State right now that are about this size, five to twenty megawatts.
In New York State?
In New York State, yes. So I focus on New York State right now with one of the...
None are up and running, though?
Not yet, not yet.
So we're like the guinea pigs?
No, we're actually built of about sixteen different employees coming from multiple different solar companies. We have a lot of experience, we're growing very rapidly, and our intent is to own and operate and be one of the larger players similar to the next area of the world. That would be, they're miracle, they're one of the largest renewable companies in the world.
Krista? It's Alliance for Wise Energy Decisions, and it's www.wiseenergy.org.
Does anybody else have any questions? Last question that I have is, where do we stand now with what you're gonna do with the county? When do you want to resubmit to the county?
We're talking to them right now, as I mentioned to you on the phone, we pulled our application because the county planner was, had some interesting comments about how he was reviewing the project, typically they review it as a county basis. He was approaching it kind of like how you guys would, the zoning board. And the issue he brought up was that they were most likely gonna issue two responses. One being that because the variances asked for were deviating so far from the original that he felt it was, to the town board's point, undermining the law, to which we felt the original request is so far from the norm that you can't get a deviation from it, that even works. So the two provisions being the twenty-five-hundred-foot and the thousand-foot, any variation of those really kind of just kills any parcel of land in the town of Stafford, especially when you only have three parcels that you're gonna do it on any of those. There's basically, and we have that map as well. Going back to this one. This one shows basically what the thousand-foot does to these hundred-plus acres, it reduces this array to three point seven five viable acres, and the array down here, number six, to one point three viable acres. And that is a thousand feet from any residence, so you just took a hundred-plus acres and shrunk it down to less than five of usable for solar, even though it's zoned for it. So his comment at the county was, it's such a large variation from it that we typically don't say we can support it. Our response to that was, we should be looking at it as a county-wide review, which he said, our next report, which was gonna be non-binding and non-official, was gonna come from the staff of the county planning board, saying that our design actually fits within the makeup of the county. So it was a weird situation where they were gonna say, we're gonna recommend to the board that they do not support the project, but the staff is gonna say in accordance with the county, it actually matches what they're seeing countywide. Again, the reason being, the Stafford law is above and beyond every other law in the county of where projects have been built or are actively being approved. So other towns can adopt similar provisions, but they may not have the infrastructure to actually build solar, so it's really a moot point to begin with. You can't build there, they passed something that basically says you can't build there. The reason we're here in front of you is because there is not room to build, you have it zoned, we have the power lines, and we have the capacity. The only issue is there's two or three pieces of the law that basically prevent it at this point.
So go back to my question, where do we stand as far as?
We're hoping to resubmit to them for the next meeting, we're just waiting to hear back from them with the holidays, we haven't had really a healthy discussion since last week, I believe. So I'm hoping to hear back from them, Rob and myself have been talking with them, and our hope is that we can make sure they're actually reviewing it under their mandate, which is on a county basis, and that we can resubmit to them, if they're gonna come back with the same decision, we'll still submit it and just keep going on.
My problem is that they're not gonna resubmit until we send from this board that we want to review.
Correct.
So that leaves us in the mode, what we do here...
Yeah, because you can't legally make a decision on any project that doesn't have county comments.
Correct.
Which we're kind of gonna chicken in and out.
Right. I mean, we can't, I can't ask for a motion tonight to resubmit it, then to find out that it's not gonna be resubmitted, so that's what I'm saying.
Yep, I understand, and our hope is that we'll know before the next meeting, that way we can come here, talk about it in January. You'll have that conversation with the county planner, planning director as well, if we can do that as a group, that would be best. So we don't have to play phone tag or telephone, and I think that would be the healthiest way to go about it.
So basically, we're on hold till I either hear from you or I hear from Levee and what we're doing.
Correct.
What about the public hearing then? You redo it?
Public hearing, go, we know what's going on.
Oh.
I think that could be re, but that will be the daily again.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
For Mr. Pennett, could you tell me a couple of the towns in Genesee County that have the, that also have the twenty-five-hundred?
From what I've heard?
Do all the towns in our county have a solar law?
No.
No.
Okay, so which ones have? Do you know offhand which ones do, so I don't waste my time researching?
All right.
Save a little bit of time.
Leroy, Pavilion.
Why did, whoa, why did Leroy put that in there?
What's that?
Oh, no, I just, you're answering who has solar law.
Oh, I thought you were gonna block me off.
The only one, the only one that has a complete copy is Alexander.
Okay.
They passed our law right down to...
Oh, yeah. So I would be in your favor. As a twenty-five-hundred foot...
So you don't know if Leroy and Pavilion have a...
No, Leroy does not.
No, they do not.
So does Alexander just sort of take your homework and steal it?
At least Leroy asked me, because Leroy did the industrial zoning. Others have done where they allow an industrial, commercial, residential, but not agricultural. And if you wanna look for an example of that, that's in Bergen. Some, I can't find any law whatsoever, Pembroke, I cannot find the law. Batavia, women without a law, and you can see the results.
And somebody referenced at the last meeting that there's a stack of findings this big that you guys used to come up with the law. Where would I find that stack of things to look through?
I believe it's still in the mailroom.
Okay.
I took that set.
Oh, you took that set?
I took that set, and it's being, somebody's looking at it right now, so.
I have it, I can drop it off to...
I'll find, if you want a set, I'll find my set and deliver it to the house.
Well, I don't want you to try too hard because I don't have the even order, I'm trying to review it since you've...
It's kind of...
I wouldn't mind her using it.
It has summaries and tables of contents. You can get a good idea.
Don't take it away from someone else that's actively using it. Do you have another one?
Not what you're saying, no.
No.
That's not law.
I don't have one. If someone else is actively using it, do not take it away from them, but I would...
I'm almost done with reviewing and doing what I needed.
I did, one more question. So in your experience, there could be towns that have an active solar law, but they may not go to the extent of talking to a solar company to see if any of the land is even qualified because of the distance required from the main transmission lines, correct?
For sure, I mean, there's...
I'm just hearing somebody's comments about this, has Alexander even had a property that even, you know, fallen?
Fallen, I don't know.
And sometimes I think, you know, it's how they just react because of what they're hearing.
Definitely.
I'm just saying, as a bad, I'm just saying they react, they don't know if it's not a parcel in the town that would actually be...
Very possible.
Yeah, I just...
And there's actually a website that shows the hosting capacity maps, it's a public website, shows it for National Grid, NYSERDA, RGA, and you can see in different colorations where the power lines are, you can click on them, you can see how many megawatts are in the queue. So it's publicly available information, it's not always accurate, but that's what we use to find out where we're gonna go. And then the next piece is, because infrastructure doesn't change very often, right? Utility infrastructure, getting new power lines in there is astronomical, expensive, and it's very difficult for them to even make a move. They put out a five-year capital improvement plan, and that usually takes ten years. So we look at the infrastructure first, then we look at what's viable around there, is there even any land viable for it, and then we look into zoning and codes and all of that. So in all honesty, where that puts us is, if this gets voted down, we will be, we'd still have the land under contract, we would be looking at it as different ways to see if there's other rules and regulations that can be looked into. But the two that just no one can get around are those two that I mentioned, the thousand-foot, twenty-five-hundred, it's just two things no one can get around.
Where's your main headquarters?
It's up in Toronto, up in Canada, just west of Buffalo and just south of Toronto.
You said you have over thirty projects you're working on in New York State.
Yes.
Do many of them have a real property value protection plan built into them?
No.
No. How about other states?
I haven't personally worked in other states, the only other area I've been trying to work in personally is Pennsylvania because of its proximity, but there you have a lot of legislation at the state level that really hasn't kicked off for this type of project. Again, I'm not aware of any mechanism of this nature because it has so many potential loopholes and just New York is lawyers and insurance, and it's difficult.
Krista, in answer to your question, the model law was based out of North Carolina.
Okay, that's what I was wondering where it came from, I mean, it was the first thing I've heard of.
And one of the things, because North Carolina doesn't have as strong a seeker, the original law had quite a bit of content assigned to seeker, which we removed because New York has its own law for seeker. The contact information is in your email right now.
Okay.
I forwarded my main contacts letter to me, and it's got a link to their website.
So we wait to hear? Yeah, we wait to hear. Thank you. All right, thanks. Okay, do business. We just have to approve our schedule for meetings for next year, Walt's got a copy here, it's basically the third Monday of every month, just like for the last eighteen years.
Why change now?
Did somebody want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And a second? I'll second. All in favor?
I, we're all set or so.
No.
Leslie.
Leslie and him. Or Lisa.
Or Lindsay.
Or Linda.
I'm voting for Linda.
Pick an out.
I'll take it.
Lacy.
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 Rockfish.
Does anybody want to make a motion to close the meeting? Does anybody want to make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll start with their motion.
All in favor?
All right.